And southwest and south side Virginia tonight lows in the upper 50s and low 60s. Isolated rain tomorrow highs in the low 70s to lower 80s. Roanoke has 60 degrees Charlottesville 60 Richmond 66.
Support for Radio IQ is provided by the Nature Conservancy for nearly 70 years dedicated to protecting Virginia's lands and waters, including Warm Springs Mountain and the Clinch River Valley. Learn more at nature.org/Virginia. And from the Charlottesville Band performing for the community since 1922. The Summer Series finale featuring guest vocalists and a violinist is at the Paramount Theater on Tuesday, August 12th at 7:30 open to the public. More at seavilleband.org.
Good morning, I'm Lori Kane at the BBC. Reports from Sudan say the paramilitary Rapid Support Forces have handed over control of the Zam Zam Camp, which they'd seized in April to Colombian mercenaries. Zam Zam provides temporary homes to thousands who have fled fighting. A spokesman for the camp described seeing armed groups moving around freely. The BBC's David Bamford.
The Sudanese government accuses the United Arab Emirates of hiring hundreds of foreign mercenaries, many of them Colombians, to fight for the RSF. Colombia's Foreign Minister has apologized, saying his government does not support mercenaries.
Elsewhere in Asia, Beijing authorities have issued the highest alert for rainstorms as the Chinese capital braces for another spell of heavy rain. In Taiwan, four people have died in the past week from floods and landslides triggered by intense rain. And health experts are warning that plastic pollution is a grave, growing, and under-recognized danger to health. There's a big push to finalize an international treaty on plastics pollution in Geneva and three areas are being looked at, says the BBC's Esme Stalard.
First of all, to try and just reduce the levels of plastic in the environment. It's become a growing political issue, but also ban the most potentially cancer-causing those harmful chemicals that are in plastic and try and improve design globally. And then finally, there's the money to try and make that happen. Could there be some sort of universal tax that they get plastic packages to pay?
I'm Lori Kane at the BBC in London.
Support for NPR comes from the station and from the Kaufman Foundation, providing access to opportunities that help people achieve financial stability, upward mobility, and economic prosperity, regardless of race, gender, or geography. Kaufman.org. From the Walton Family Foundation, working to create access to opportunity for people and communities by tackling tough social and environmental problems. More information is at waltonfamilyfoundation.org. And from the listeners who support this NPR station.
It's Morning Edition on Radio IQ. I'm Jeff Bossard. When you hear the official temperature for your city and feel certain it's hotter than that at your house, you may be right. Temperatures can vary significantly within a single locality depending on how much green space or pavement is nearby. A team of researchers and volunteers recently completed a study of these microclimates in Virginia. Reporter Emma Malinak wrote about it for Cardinal News. She spoke with Fred Echols.
Emma, it's no surprise that cities are warmer than surrounding areas, especially during the summer. But researchers at schools associated with the Virginia Foundation for Independent Colleges wanted more data about that. How'd they get it?
For probably 100 years, we've known that cities are hotter than rural areas or coastal areas. You can tell when you go into a city, you feel heat radiating off of pavement, off of buildings. These researchers at these colleges in Virginia wanted to see what they could learn about Virginia localities. And so they did a very community science-based approach where they organized 200 volunteers across the state to collect temperature data in the same way, at the same time, across certain data collection periods. What they came up with is that there is really significant variation within the borders of any locality, just depending on what's surrounding you.
And in doing the study, they were able to demonstrate that these urban microclimates are closely associated with past socioeconomic factors.
In 2020, there was a study led by Jeremy Hoffman, who is a climate researcher. This was a nationwide study. And they found that there's a connection between neighborhoods that were formerly redlined and neighborhoods that tend to be hotter. So redlining was a practice in the early to mid 20th century where certain neighborhoods were denied loans based on their racial and ethnic composition. It was a very common practice up until we saw civil rights legislation happen in the 60s.
Well, legislation or not, it seems those areas are still hotter.
What we see is that these neighborhoods that weren't invested in in the early 20th century continue to not be invested in. And, you know, making public parks takes a lot of money. Planting trees takes a lot of money. Taking pavement lots and maybe pulling some of that pavement up to put in a green space or to put in a median that has trees, all of that requires a lot of investment. And so researchers have found that areas that historically haven't seen that kind of investment still aren't seeing investment today to add in features like trees and parks that would make an area cooler.
And as you point out, that original redline study was a nationwide study, but Virginia falls in line with it.
Virginia colleges wanted to see if it was a pattern here within the Commonwealth. So they ended up kind of overlaying redlining maps that they found with their heat maps that they made. And they are seeing that overlap still of neighborhoods that were historically redlined still being hotter today.
Well, one of the hopes here, I guess, is that we will learn not to do things that make hot weather hotter.
It doesn't have to be, you know, a grand gesture. Even just planting one tree or maintaining one green space really can make a difference.
If you'd like to see the results of the microclimate study, there'll be a link on our website. Emma Malinak reports for cardinalnews.org. I'm Fred Echols.
Cardinal News is a nonprofit, independent, online news organization covering southwest and south side Virginia.
Federal funding for public media has been eliminated. The funding cuts will hit October 1st, and they will hit small rural newsrooms like this one especially hard. This community could lose access to local news, national reporting from NPR, and crucial emergency alerts. So please help safeguard this free public service by donating today. Here's how, and thank you so much.
Go to radioiq.org and click the donate button.
I want to pass along a traffic note that just popped up in Richmond. I-95 southbound, this is mile marker 78. This is just south of Westwood Avenue. delays after a crash, south right lane, right shoulder closed, but one mile backup, I-95 south, mile marker 78.
Support for Radio IQ comes from EZ Performance Center and Honda. Located in Orange, Virginia, EZ Performance offers Honda Power Sports and power equipment. More information at ezpcva.com. And from the Southern Environmental Law Center. With 40 years of experience and more than 200 staff, S E L C's legal and policy teams work to protect the environment Virginians depend on. SELC.org.
Cooler this week, some showers possible by Wednesday. Mostly sunny for most today. Highs in the upper 70s to mid 80s. Roanoke 60 degrees Charlottesville 62 Richmond 66.
When calculating statistics becomes political.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Bitwarden Password Manager. This back-to-school season, a password manager can help students and teachers log in securely across all accounts and devices. Bitwarden.com.
From Marketplace, I'm Sabri Ben Ashour in for David Brancaccio. On Friday, the Bureau of Labor Statistics reported that job creation in the U.S. was much lower than expected in July and revised down its numbers for May and June, reporting there were 258,000 fewer jobs created in those months than initially estimated. President Trump, upset about the revisions, then proceeded to fire the head of the Bureau. The president now says he'll name a replacement in the coming days. Marketplace's Mitchell Hartman has more.
President Trump's reaction to the bad jobs report news was swift. He posted on Truth Social that, quote, "We need accurate jobs numbers," and proceeded to fire the BLS Commissioner Erica McIntarfer, who was appointed by President Biden. President Trump alleged that the July jobs numbers were rigged to damage him politically. Experts in the field say any such manipulation of the data by BLS, including by the commissioner, would be nigh on impossible, given the high level of scrutiny and cross-checking by nonpartisan career statisticians that the entire process of BLS data production undergoes.
And if there were to be some sort of breach, we would know about it.
Steve Pearson is Director of Science Policy at the American Statistical Association and was interviewed before this latest controversy.
The signal would come out that there has been some sort of improper meddling with the data.
There's been no such evidence about the production of the July jobs report so far. Erica McIntarfer was a year and a half into a four-year appointment as BLS Commissioner, confirmed by the Senate. The president has the right to fire her. Her temporary replacement is a well-respected, longtime career BLS employee. I'm Mitchell Hartman for Marketplace.
Manufacturing is having a rough time. A report out last week from the Institute for Supply Management found that in July, manufacturing orders shrank for the sixth month in a row. That is after the Labor Department reported that manufacturing employment hit its lowest level in three years. Marketplace's Justin Ho has more on what is going on in America's factories.
Manufacturers have plenty of reasons to be holding off on hiring right now, says Tom Derry, CEO of the Institute for Supply Management.
Demand looks weak, and I'm not going to fill that job role because I'm not going to pay somebody for work I can't get. There isn't work to be done there.
Derry says all the tariff back and forth isn't helping either. Kathy Bosjansik, chief economist at Nationwide, says she expects manufacturing jobs to stay soft this year, at least until tariff policy starts to shape up.
If they know what the tariff rate will be and what the new trade environment will look like, they can then plan around that and make adjustments.
Bosjansik says once that happens, manufacturing employment should start to pick up again, especially if manufacturers decide to expand in the U.S. But she doesn't expect hiring to boom.
We could boost production, but not necessarily one-for-one increasing employment levels along with that.
Bosjansik says manufacturers are likely to invest more resources into better technology rather than hiring more workers. I'm Justin Ho for Marketplace.
All right, let's do the numbers. The FTSE in London is up five tenths of a percent. Dow, S&amp;P, and Nasdaq futures are all up in the five to eight tenths percent range, with the Dow futures up 235 points. The yield on the 10-year Treasury is 4.22%.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Ubico, makers of the Ubi key. Ubi key helps protect important digital applications and services. Ubi key, still undefeated, the original passkey. More at ubico.com. And by This Old House Radio Hour Podcast, answering listeners DIY and renovation questions and diving into home design trends, available in podcast apps.
Hail, as in the balls of ice that fall from the sky at anywhere from nine to more than 100 miles per hour, cause billions of dollars in damage each year. But a lot about it remains a mystery. So storm-chasing scientists are gathering clues to better understand it. Rachel Cohen with the Mountain West News Bureau reports.
Dewey Kahawai was sleeping when he heard a knock on his bedroom window.
I sprang out of bed and thought, oh my gosh, somebody's trying to get into my house.
Then he heard thumps on the roof, and he knew a hailstorm was sweeping through Colorado's eastern plains 50 miles north of Denver. His house was fine, but by morning, his phone was blowing up with calls and texts. Kahawai runs his own company, American Pride Auto Glass.
There was people's cars that were literally destroyed. Three or four inch diameter holes through the glass on their vehicles. Front windshield's with six, eight bits.
He estimates he alone attended to hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of damage. Ian Giamenco says hail costs can add up. He's a researcher at the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety.
It's not as big a life safety threat as a storm surge or flash flooding, but it happens every single year and it's costing us just tens of billions of dollars.
And the costs are increasing, partly because more people are moving to places with hailstorms, and researchers think climate change could mean fewer but more destructive storms. But Giamenco says there's still a lot we don't know about hail. To find answers, he's part of a huge team of researchers working on the largest study of hail in 40 years. It's called Ice Chip. For six weeks this summer, scientists chased hailstorms around the Great Plains and Mountain West.
There were some fantastic storms.
Becky Adams Sealan is the scientist leading Ice Chip. She says they flew drones into clouds and measured the hail that fell on the ground to figure out.
How fast does a hailstorm fall? How does it melt? Like, again, all things that seem pretty basic but are surprisingly difficult to try to unpack.
She says piecing together all this data could tell us why certain ingredients in the sky, like temperature, elevation, wind speed, produce a different recipe of hail that falls to the ground. This data could be used to give more detailed warnings and share.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to City of Roanoke, Roanoke City Council Joint Meeting with the Economic Development Authority. Just a couple of quick announcements before we get started. City council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And now video streamed live through youtube.com at Roanoke, Virginia. So that's a change. Make note of it. Thank you all. I also want to, and we'll do this again at 2 o'clock, but I, you all probably have noticed a refurbishing of the city council chambers. And I want to thank Dr. Lydia Patton for her vision for this, and especially want to thank Deputy City Manager Sam Roman and our facilities team for making all of this happen in a very small window of time. So as you have opportunity, please extend your thanks to them. All right, we are happy to have the Economic Development Authority with us today. And so I'll ask, first of all, Ms. Webb, our Deputy City Clerk, to call the role for council.
Mr. Nash.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
And Mayor Cobb.
Here, and we are all present. And I'll ask the Board Secretary for the Economic Development Authority to call the role for the authority.
I believe that would be Ms. Franco.
Here.
Call the role.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare a role.
That's all right.
Duke?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
And I know Ms. Reed is on her way right now. Ms. Hassel is here. Mr. Duke, Mr. Nash. And I think Mr. Howie may be absent this morning. I'm not sure, but I did something.
Okay, well, you know, sometimes there's nothing better than an improv roll call. Right? We're really glad that you all are here today. We are grateful for the work that you do. So I want to begin by saying that in Virginia, every locality is required to have an Economic Development Authority. City councils, city governments cannot give money to businesses directly. We have to do that through our Economic Development Authority. And so the role that each of you play is really significant, not only for the health and well-being of our city, but for our economic growth. And so it's my honor to welcome Braxton Knaff, who is the Chair of the EDA, to share some opening remarks. And then I believe we're going to have an overview presentation, and then we'll have a conversation together about our collective work.
Good morning, City Manager Turner, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, and members of City Council. I'm Braxton Knaff, and I'm a member of the city's Economic Development Authority. We are honored to be here today. We have been extremely busy the past year and excited to share with you some of the many initiatives we have undertaken since we presented last October. We are blessed with a great team of both very engaged board members and extremely competent city staff. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Economic Development Specialist, Alyssa Kundaf, for our annual Economic Development Authority presentation.
You can pull it up. Okay, thank you. I know you guys are seeing all my behind-the-scenes notes. All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Alyssa Kundaf. I'm an Economic Development Specialist for the Economic Development Department, and I serve as the EDA Staff Liaison. Normally, Mark would be doing this, our Director Mark Nelson, but he's currently snorkeling with his family. So I will be presenting today. And I'm joined here by Lisa, my supervisor, who is our Senior Economic Development Specialist. But she really needs no introduction. So I hope that you'll see this year has really been a strong year for the EDA with lots of new and exciting projects and new investment initiatives in our community. So I think I can use this. Perfect, couldn't be any easier. Thank you. So we have a seven-member board that is appointed by city council. They serve a staggered four-year term. And we really have a wide cross-section of industries across the city represented with our membership, from real estate to innovation to manufacturing to small business. So we're really excited about our membership and have a really active and engaged group. And this year, we also have a new attorney for our EDA, Mr. Mike Lockaby with, oh, hello, we're live. With Spillman, Thomas, and Battle. I feel like I should be like, welcome to Roanoke. All right, so this is just kind of our roadmap for our presentation today. I'm going to go over what the EDA administers, that being private activity conduit bonds, local enterprise zone incentives, and our performance agreements, which are revenue-sharing agreements with private entities when there is a public infrastructure improvement as a part of that. And then we're going to discuss the new and exciting investments that the EDA has made this past fiscal year. All right, I wanted to spend a little bit of time on this portion, the private activity bonds, as some of you all are new to council. And I'm not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Lockaby if I miss anything. But one of the things that an EDA can do is issue private activity bonds for certain entities such as hospitals, assisted living facilities, educational facilities, or small manufacturing facilities. So when one of these entities is interested in pursuing bond financing, they can actually do it through the EDA. And in this way, the EDA serves as a conduit. So sometimes these are called conduit bonds. And with the EDA being the issuer of the bond, the entity can actually receive a lower interest rate on the bond, and the bond is exempt from income tax. So this is really advantageous to, to these entities that are able to pursue conduit bonds through the EDA. As part of this transaction, the EDA charges an annual administrative fee on these bonds. And that's actually a large way that the EDA brings in revenue. And then the EDA uses that revenue for its economic development incentives and grants and its overall mission. So an example, and I included a picture here, is the EDA did a conduit bond for Carillion's construction of the Crystal Spring Tower. And that's a picture of our members getting to tour that construction in 2023. And then an upcoming one that we have that you'll hear about later today, and we've spoken to you all briefly about, is Brandon Oaks is pursuing a conduit bond through the EDA under Virginia Lutheran Homes. They're expanding their independent living facilities. So, did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Lockaby?
No, ma'am, you covered it.
All right, he's trained me well. Okay. All right, I wanted to talk about a few of the things we've done this year with our income, which, again, going back to conduit bonds, that's part of where the EDA gets its income from. So the first one is we gave downtown, the Downtown Roanoke Ambassador Program an $80,000 commitment. You all have probably seen the ambassadors around downtown. They offer beautification services, hospitality, and outreach to make our downtown a safe and welcoming place for our residents and visitors. We have given $100,000 over five years to Ramp, the Regional Accelerator and Mentoring Program, which is a part of the Roanoke Blacksburg Innovation Alliance. Ramp is a 12-week program to help startup companies grow in the Roanoke region with access to mentors, capital, and business resources. And I included a picture here of the two gentlemen who founded Tiny Cargo. They're an example of a company that participated in Ramp. And last year, they chose to locate their lab space in the city, and it will actually be the first clean room for commercial biotech and manufacturing in the region. Just to explain what they do, it's not, it's not specific to the EDA, but if you just don't know what Tiny Cargo is, they manufacture exosomes for worldwide supply and zolacta, if I pronounced that correctly, I'm looking to Aileen, a drug therapeutic target targeted to treat radiation exposure and as a radio protectant during cancer treatment. Lastly, that third picture there is a rendering that we received from the Roanoke Parks Foundation. That is a hub that's going to be at the new Mill Mountain Trails that they are constructing. And these, so this is going to be the kickoff point for the new trails at Mill Mountain, and it's going to have some educational elements, and there's going to be some easier trails for children as well. So that was another discretionary grant that we gave out this past fiscal year. All right, another role of the EDA is to administer performance agreements on the city's behalf. And these are the three performance agreements that are currently active. A performance agreement can be structured in a few ways. One way is the EDA provides funds to developers once they meet certain benchmarks. So a good example of that would be the Bauer, the former Campbell Court project. That is how that one is structured. Another way it can be structured is by rebating certain taxes on an annual basis, and that's all detailed in the performance agreement. The Bridges would be an example of that. So you all probably know these developments, but the Bridges was a redeveloped former brownfield site. It includes restaurants and in the former Ironworks Yard and 284 apartments. It's right across from FBRI. And then we all obviously know Riverdale. Phase 1 is a $60 million investment with $10 million by the city, plans for 375 apartments, restaurants, and commercial space. And then lastly, the Bauer, $35 million investment, commercial and retail space. The Bauer is the name of the apartments, which are 90 units, and courtyard and public plaza. I wanted to make a specific note about the Bauer. There is a unique element in this performance agreement where the city gave the EDA the funds to manage in investments while those performance benchmarks were waiting to be reached. And then as a part of the agreement, the EDA was actually able to obtain and keep the interest earned on those investments. So thank you for that. Hopefully, you'll see the investments we've made in the community with, with that interest earned. All right, I wanted to talk about our new initiatives. So this one, I'm going to spend some, a little bit more time on as well. We, the We, the EDA, created the Business Equipment Incentive Program last year and funded it at $200,000. And really, the impetus for this program was, as staff, we were going out on business visits, and businesses were really saying, "Hey, these grants and incentives that you offer are really great, but what would really be helpful is some type of grant or incentive around purchasing of equipment," and just that high capital expense that purchasing equipment is. Also, as a department, we really didn't have any grants and incentives to offer for businesses that are outside of the enterprise zone unless it's something like a performance agreement, which I just spoke about. So the EDA committed to create this equipment incentive program at $200,000. The requirements for businesses were they had to have two full-time W-2s, be current on all other taxes, be operational for one year at a physical commercial location in the city. And it was going to be a 50-50 match with a max award of $20,000. And we opened it on November 1st, and the funds flew out the door. The money was fully committed in just six days. It was first come, first served, and I'm telling you, November 1st was a busy day seeing all those applications come in. So we included here the list of recipients from last year. And the EDA has chosen to run this program again, and they upped the funding to $250,000 because of how popular the program was, and just clearly saw that there was a need. And what we also saw staff was a need to create separate categories this year. So we have a bucket of funding for the manufacturing and the industrial sector, and then we have a bucket of funding for the commercial and retail sector. And we also changed the requirement specific for the commercial and retail sector to just have one W-2 employee, because there were a lot of small retail restaurants that were interested in applying, but they just, they couldn't meet that two full-time W-2 employee to be able to qualify. So we really saw those changes as a way to kind of help the restaurant community here in Roanoke in particular. I did want to note on this program, the Commissioner of Revenue's Office conducted an analysis for us of the equipment purchase with this program. And assuming the businesses keep the equipment for the full five-year depreciation period, this will generate $266 in total revenue over the next five years for the city. And I want to emphasize that the $200,000 that this program was funded with was not city dollars. This was EDA funding that is creating a return for the city. All right. Another program that we just launched is the Disaster Recovery and Resilience Fund. And the impetus for this was just a few businesses that have experienced disaster, whether that's natural or man-made, and were seeking assistance. So this is a new fund that we have created that we're excited to see applicants for. It's funded at $100,000 with a max award of $10,000 per businesses. And again, another great benefit to this fund is you do not have to be within the enterprise zone to be eligible for this fund as well. So that's live on our website now, and we'll receive applications as needed. All right. Lastly, we have the Walker Foundry Site, which we're very excited about. The developers for the former Walker Foundry Site in Norwich approached us about what's called the Industrial Revitalization Fund. It's managed through the State's Department of Housing and Community Development. And for this fund, local government has to serve as the formal applicant. So the EDA served as the formal applicant on behalf of the Foundry Realty LLC. We asked for a $1 million loan. It's a low-interest loan to the Foundry developers. And the total, I want to mention that the total funding for this program was only $4.5 million. We requested a million, and we got our full million. We found that out two weeks ago, so we were very excited about that. Again, this will serve as a low-interest loan to the Foundry. And what they're envisioning for the space is, the developers call it a competitive social venue, if you've heard of that before. So it's going to be a place where you can play games, recreational activities, get a bite to eat, a social gathering space. And then really, a key asset of it is, if you can see, it's right along the Greenway in Norwich. So that's really going to be a key community asset, not only for Norwich, but the city as a whole. And these competitive social venues are really not something we have yet in our market that other markets have, and we're really excited to see this come to fruition and be a part of it. And then not a part of the commercial project, but down the road, you'll see those apartment units there. They're planning approximately 270 apartment units with a focus on affordable housing. All right. I wanted to chat about the enterprise zone, because that is something that the EDA helps to administer. So the enterprise zone is a state program that is also run by DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. It's a partnership between state and local government, and it encourages job creation and property investment, property improvement in the enterprise zone. So for a locality to have an enterprise zone, they have to have a local commitment to offer incentives that go along with the state incentives. This focuses on target areas and distressed localities with the goal of high-wage job creation. The state incentives I listed here are the Job Creation Grant and the Real Property Investment Grant. And then we have a number of local incentives that the EDA administers on the city's behalf as well. And these incentives are funded through the city, and the city passes the funds through the EDA. So the discretionary grants and the other funds we created, those were from EDA dollars. The enterprise zone local incentives are traditionally city-funded. I wanted to include a list of the businesses that received the Real Property Investment Grant this past year. This isn't something that the EDA manages, but it is obviously a part of the enterprise zone, and I think is significant to mention, because our staff really works to make sure that businesses are aware that, one, they're in the enterprise zone, and, two, they could be eligible for these incentives, because we never want to leave, we never want businesses to leave money on the table. The previous fiscal year, there were only two recipients of this grant, and this year there were seven. So we were really excited to see that growth in the program. Our Local Facade Grant Program is our most popular program. I included a picture here of Brandon Surgical Arts. You probably all know this development. I know some of you came to the ribbon cutting. This project redeveloped an entire block on Brandon, and so they received facade grants as a part of that. I just wanted to go over some numbers. The past fiscal year, we paid out $151,870.87 in facade grants. That was seven awards. And that leveraged an investment in the private community of $1,015,835.64. So just doing a brief analysis on that, for every dollar the city invested in this facade grant program, that sparked a property investment of $5.68. So just to kind of close, this is a brief mention. We didn't want to spend too much time on it. We want to talk about the other exciting things that we've also discussed today. But in the last budget, the EDA did not receive funding to continue the incentives for the enterprise zone program. So that would just be something we would ask for in moving forward in budget discussions this coming year. But the EDA did want to emphasize that if it can't happen in the budget this year, the EDA is committed to these programs and will fund the gap to continue running these programs until that can be funded in the city's budget. And I included a picture of another facade grant recipient there, the French farmhouse downtown. All right. Does anyone have any questions specifically for me over anything that we've discussed? And then I know the EDA will chat directly with council members.
Ms. Powers.
Sure. So the EDA funds that you invest, are y'all still investing those with the VML VACO Finance Virginia Investment Pool?
Well, we use Rockefeller Capital Management with the John Lewis Group.
Okay. I'm very familiar.
We've never been with VML. We considered them when we looked at investment pools, and we ended up at two different options that were not them.
Well, I'm very familiar with Rockefeller Group, and they're great.
Yes.
But if you needed to do funds that you needed liquid in a shorter period of time, the VIP is a very good one to look at.
Okay.
I still get their emails and follow what the fund does, so it's something that we keep on our radar. So thank you for reminding us.
Yeah. And they'll be at the VML Conference that's going to be here in Roanoke. That group will be here, if you want to reach out and talk to them. It's in October.
October.
October. Okay. We'll get that on our calendar.
11 through 14th, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would there be anything at the VML Conference that would be of interest to us as an EDA?
I know they're going to be here, but I'm not familiar with.
Possibly. The schedule hasn't been listed yet, but we can certainly keep you informed about that. It's nice that we're able to host it this year.
Mm-hmm. Definitely.
Can you talk a little bit about the Housing Trust Fund?
Yeah. So last year, the EDA committed $225,000 to the city's Workforce Housing Trust Fund that is managed through TAP. I believe, if I remember the specifics of that program, it's a low-interest loan to developers. We can inquire further on an update on that fund, but it's not directly managed by the EDA.
But am I right that we did the funding? Did we do the funding through EDA?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to share that connection.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe the original amount was $2 million from the city through ARPA funds, and then you all added the additional investment.
The $225.
The $225.
I think the city went straight to TAP, and our funds went straight to TAP to.
Yes.
Because TAP manages it.
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
You get a gold star. That was a great presentation. It was very thorough. If you can share that with us.
Absolutely.
That would be really helpful. We tend to get a lot of inquiries about the investments that we're making through the EDA and how all of this helps grow our economy, and this was fantastic.
Yeah.
So we're just open now for conversation. I appreciated you all sharing your funding requests. That's very helpful for us to know as we're going into year-round budgeting conversations. So thank you for that. What other things are of interest to you all as an EDA that maybe you didn't, Alyssa didn't cover, but things you kind of see forecasting or initiatives you'd like to explore in the future?
Go ahead if you're ready.
From Ollie's idea about the.
Yeah. We're in the early stages of looking at some potential venture capital help or trying to fund that in the area. We're constantly working on affordable housing and trying to find different funds or sources to be involved in that, of which we just discussed one. There's been a couple others that hadn't necessarily come to fruition yet but are being in the works. I know the Foundry has a large component that's not just apartments. It's going to be townhomes that are for sale. We're looking at other loans that come through the state. So let me explain that the IR, the Industrial Revitalization Fund that's coming from the state through the EDA being loaned out to the Foundry, that money is going to be paid back on a 20-year prime minus-two interest rate. That money will stay with the EDA and can be loaned out for similar projects in Roanoke in the future. So that money doesn't, if the EDA ends up administering this program, which we have options of finding partners to do it, but if we do it in-house, then that money will come back to us and can be used for other industrial revitalization projects. We're also working with them to potentially go after another $5 million in funding that would fund affordable housing and homeownership within their project. It would be a similar type thing, where if we agree to administer it, as that money's paid back, it could be reloaned out for a similar project in the city of Roanoke. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes. I'm sure other members might have some stuff they'd like to share, but we stay active. We meet every month, even when we don't want to, it seems like. And just constantly have stuff going behind the scenes. Alyssa and I do a lot of hours in between meetings, and, you know, our other members do a lot of stuff, too. So we have a lot going on. And I'm sure there's other stuff I've missed, if anybody wants to share anything.
The revolving loan fund, the idea of a loan fund has been something we've kicked around for a long time. Because a grant is wonderful, but you've got to find the next source. And so we're hoping to create an engine, and Ollie's got a really great background to be a core part of that. We've tried. He's bringing some energy that's fantastic. We've got an engaged board. Alyssa talked about this, but we represent lots of different industries, which is, and different segments of the community. So it's a really healthy reflection of Roanoke and a thoughtful, engaged group. Our attendance is fantastic, and I've watched it have been several years. Attendance and participation has continued to improve, and there's a lot of positive energy, I think, among the group.
That's great.
I would just echo that we have spent a lot of time looking at affordable housing. So anytime anybody in this room can share anything with us, we're, it's an eye-opening dilemma we have, guys.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, later this morning, we're going to hear, receive some information about the new Hope and Home Task Force related to addressing homelessness. And many of those conversations are going to be related to creating more housing opportunities, and in some cases, supportive services, but primarily this range of affordable housing. So at some point, I think it will be helpful for the task force to hear from you all about your discovery in this work and some of the things that you're coming across, because that partnership's really important.
Yeah. And I'll just echo, because some of the thunder was taken. I'm in the housing business, in the real estate business, and I see firsthand some of the challenges, especially recently with housing prices increasing and not keeping up with incomes and the need for first-time homeownership that could bolster that base of our citizens. So I, too, am grateful for all the discussion about housing affordability.
Yeah. Thank you, Ken. Other comments, insights?
Lisa, just wanted me to mention that council members are always welcome to come to the EDA meetings. We meet the third Wednesday of every month at 8:00 AM in the conference room in our Economic Development Office. And we, Mr. Nelson always makes sure to send the agenda ahead of time to Ms. Turner, and we can send the agenda to you as well in case there's anything of interest. I know that this one in August, we'll be discussing the Foundry, and we'll be discussing that venture capitalist fund that Mr. Howey has introduced.
And I will say, Mr. Walker, Ed Walker invited us to come and do a walkthrough of the Riverdale project. That was very interesting. It was great to see that and just kind of see what it's going to look like. So I encourage people to get in touch with him to do that. It's very eye-opening. The only thing I told him is, he said, "Well, you know, it's been 30 years." And I'm thinking, hmm, I'll be 98. I don't know when I'll make it. Maybe I can see half of it. But it was great to see that and just have the vision of what that's going to look like. So the Walker Foundry, as that progresses, I think it would be great if people could go up there and take a tour of it. Because I think it does help us understand what that does and how that brings our city together for the future of other businesses coming.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you all for the work that you do. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah. Mr. Paulson.
I was kind of wondering, is there any synergy between the EDA and what's going on in our innovation corridor, like the Johnson &amp; Johnson Labs? Is there an update on where those are? I know the clean room that I think they're adding to that is supposed to be for Tiny Cargo, and I know we've seen it being constructed, but if you could speak on that, that would be great.
I know they're working on it. And do you have an update on it?
On the incubator space? Yeah. So the incubator space is coming along really well. It's on target and on budget, which is great. It's anticipated that it will probably open somewhere towards the end of this year or maybe early 2026, but it's moving along really well. And there's been a lot of work to look into, you know, how to fill this building. We see it as a really exciting step towards really growing that innovation and startup sector here in Roanoke. So it's a really, it's a really good time. And the EDA has been very supportive. So the support that Ramp received, which Alyssa mentioned, that is very, very much connected to those efforts as well, because that also goes towards these startup companies that could potentially eventually be in that building, for example.
Thank you.
Well, just to build on that a little bit, I was really happy to hear about your conversations related to building venture capital, because I know that's a conversation not only in the innovation corridor, but with the Research Institute. the innovation corridor, but with the research institute, with all of these kind of mind-blowing efforts that are emerging through research and Ramp and both startup companies and well-established companies. Is there anything else that you want to add to that in terms of what you're seeing and how the city can be supportive of those efforts?
Yeah, I think, so, to your point, I think we have a wonderful pipeline here. So, we have, you know, FBRI here. We have, you know, Virginia Tech, their presence in the region certainly will also kind of drive companies towards that incubator, we're hoping. And, you know, the venture fund will be an important source of funding, because obviously capital is something that these young companies are always looking for. So, we have some sources of capital here in the area, and so building that is always, is always going to be important. I think, you know, what we have seen going towards that, the support that we have already received from the city, the city has been a vital part of that incubator and growing that sector already. So, continued support along this, you know, along those, along this path is gonna be really important for the continued success. Yeah. But I would like to just point out that already the city has been incredibly supportive of that, and I know everyone who's been on that project is very appreciative of the attention and the support that the city has already provided.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is a fund that probably won't debut till next year. We're very fortunate that we can move quickly on things, but this is the type thing. We wanna go a little bit slower and make sure we get into this in the proper way.
So moved.
Yeah. But it'd probably be something that comes out in the first quarter next year.
Okay. Mr. Volleson?
Sorry, I'm just having thoughts then, so it's early. One of the things that I know that we're trying to do here in Roanoke is bring in some more retail partners, and I was just wondering how that is, what the status is or how that's going, because I know that, you know, if we had a Trader Joe's, we'd probably have a population of a million by now.
And we'd all have a lot of food at our homes.
Yeah.
Brady Lawrence, who's on my team, she is working in conjunction with the city of Salem and with Roanoke County on the retail study, and that is going along quite well. She also attended the International Shopping Center Council Meeting in Las Vegas in May and has made numerous contacts, and there's so much of this that is behind the scenes that we really can't talk about it. But we do know that Trader Joe's will not be making additional decisions until next year on new locations, but Brady's done a stellar job in connecting with these developers, and you will see some, I think, great things come into fruition in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So, just hold on. We just can't talk about this.
I have a hobby lobby too.
Yes, right. I just wanted to add, the consulting firm that Brady is using is called Retail Strategies, and it's a partnership with Salem and Roanoke County, and the EDA funded the city's portion of paying for that consultant, and they have really been worth every penny, because anytime she has a question, they know the contact. They know who to reach out to, or she'll pitch, you know, "What about a Hobby Lobby in this space?" And they'll say, "Well, we'll run an analysis," and they, it's fascinating. They can run an analysis of, well, Hobby Lobby or Planet Fitness typically goes next to these tenants, and it doesn't work in this square footage, or they want to be out of Main and Main, or so. They have, it's really been a strong investment.
I will tell you that she is on the phone with individuals every single day, so, and sometimes we do joint meetings with them. We're like, we've gotta call them now. So, we all sit down and we call them. So, it's going really, really well. So, thank you, and thanks to the EDA for your help with that.
That's great. Other questions or comments? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for everyone coming, and I appreciate the conversation. I also got to do a tour with Evelyn of the Riverdale site, and then I got to do a tour with Councilwoman Volleson of the Foundry site, and those are both so impressive, and I think, I believe they will succeed and come along, and I think they'll just be so transformational for those neighborhoods and for the city as a whole. And I know that I've learned a lot today. I know that you're working on a lot more than housing and supporting our economic development in a lot of ways, but I'm also, we are all very focused on housing, and I was just really impressed by those projects, and so thank you for your work and contributions and everything you're doing, because, you know, again, it could be ten, fifteen, twenty years before some of this is fully online and we see the full impacts, but I think that it'll be really fantastic for these neighborhoods in the same way that the River House was, and Wasina really transformed that neighborhood. So, thank you all very much. I'm excited to support you and be a part of it.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else?
I'd like to just add one thing that's really important to everybody in this room. Roanoke City is doing a fabulous job of managing things, and the EDA gets to support it. I would encourage everyone in this room to go out and praise Roanoke City and praise all the things that we're doing for our community. It's good work, guys. I'm in a privileged seat to be able to see it, and I'm just very excited about it.
Thank you, Ms. Franco. Appreciate that. I think we need to toot our horn a lot more than we do, so I appreciate that. All right. Well, thank you all for your presence here today and your time and your energy and your effort. I'm gonna ask Chair Naff to adjourn the EDA, and then I'll follow up with that.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. We adjourn.
All right. So, council's gonna be, take a brief five-minute recess. We'll come back to these tables for our briefings and our action items. Okay.
All right. Welcome back, everyone, to our continued morning city council meeting. We have a number of items for action, and they are all closed meetings, so we'll take one at a time, and at the, after I present it, each one will need a motion and a second, and then a vote. The first is a communication from my office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by the council pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 Code of Virginia as amended. A list of those boards and commissions that will be considering is included in the agenda. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. The second is a communication from the city attorney requesting that the city council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter, requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the central part of the city of Roanoke pursuant to section 2.2-3711A5 Code of Virginia as amended. I'll need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Ms. Powers. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. Third item is a communication from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing possible disposal of publicly-owned property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A3 Code of Virginia as amended. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. A communication from the city attorney requesting that city council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter regarding utility services provided to city residents and any impacts caused by the location of a business or industry to the region pursuant to section 2.2-3711A8 Code of Virginia as amended. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I made a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Powers and Mr. Hagan. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. And the last closed meeting request is a communication from the city attorney requesting that city council convene in a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter, requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney concerning contract obligations involving a city-owned facility in the central part of the city of Roanoke pursuant to section 2.2-3711A8 Code of Virginia as amended. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Ms. Sanchez Jones, and Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. We have in front of us and have received the city council agenda for our two o'clock PM session. Are there any matters for discussion or additions or deletions to that agenda? Okay. And any additional topics for discussion before we move into our briefings? All right, thank you. Well, I will call on our city attorney, Mr. Spencer, for two briefings. The first is the proposed code amendment, Article Eight, cigarette tax.
Thank you, Mayor. David Collins is here and worked on that. If he could address this issue, I will address the second one involving potential code amendment dealing with hybrid cane. dealing with hybrid canines.
All right, thank you. Mr. Collins, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, members of city council. Succinctly, this is a brief amendment to Article 8, Chapter 32 of the City Code, our cigarette tax, that would transfer responsibility for the administration and oversight of the tax from the Director of Finance to the Commissioner of Revenue. The proposed ordinance amending the City Code that is attached through your consideration removes the Director of Finance from being referenced and replaces that solely with the Commissioner, Commissioner of the Revenue. The Commissioner of the Revenue has been implementing and being responsible for that tax for some time now, and this is just a matter of updating the City Code with current practice. I'm looking around. Is Mr. Taylor from?
Mr. Jonathan Taylor from our Commissioner of Revenues office deputy commissioner is here also with any comments that?
Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Good to be here. Thanks for having me. Yeah, so, Vice Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, members of council. Like David said, it's a pretty simple, or really complex, depending on how good you are with Microsoft Word, piece of ordinance that replaces Director of Finance with Commissioner of Revenue. It's a process that our office has owned. We have the relationship with the businesses as we are conducting field investigations and, I mean, we're there conducting the seizures, so it's a little more logistical and, I don't know about relational, but they're a little more comfortable talking with who they've already talked to, especially something like cigarette seizure. So it's a little more easy for the businesses to navigate. Makes things easier on us, makes things easier on the Director of Finance. We're not locking a garbage bag full of cigarettes in one locker and then walking them upstairs or, you know. So, any questions?
Questions from council. So, next steps for this ordinance, will there, tell us, walk us through that a little bit.
Well, we will present this on your next council agenda for adoption barring any considerations or concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Taylor. Any other questions or comments?
I do have one question, just remembering. So, once you do the seizure, and I think what I've read in there, the penalty to get that back is, I was a little confused about that because there was one part that said 10 cents and then there was another part that said 50% or something. I thought they had to pay the tax as if they had obtained the cigarette stamp. Am I wrong about that? So, how does that work?
There is a penalty that has to be paid, and that penalty is paid to the treasurer. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
So, there is a hearing that's described in the ordinance. In practice, we've already held that hearing because we're on site and we get to find out their story there, and Ryan can make his determination based on the evidence that we see while we're on site and when they come into the office to have that conversation with us. So, if it is determined in the course of that hearing that this was done in a malfeasant way, right, they're trying to get around the cigarette tax, they're rebating taxes, then there's that 50% penalty plus the cost of the taxes, and the cigarettes are then incinerated. There's no option for redemption in that case. If it's a case where, you know, we just, we didn't know, we've got a corner store that doesn't do enough volume to purchase direct, they're not familiar with the wholesale process, this was a series of unfortunate events, they can pay 10% penalty plus tax, and there is an option for them to redeem. However, we do not have the machine available to apply the tax stamps. That is only owned by wholesalers. It's a pretty expensive and complex piece of equipment. So, in that instance, they just pay the 10% lower penalty plus the tax, and unfortunately the cigarettes are still going to be incinerated in that regard, so.
Thank you.
A whole lot for a little, huh?
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
For the information.
Our next briefing from the city attorney is the proposed City Code Amendment, Division 4, Hybrid Canines, Sections 6-55-57, Article 2, Chapter 6, Animals and Fowl. Mr. Spencer, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for this. Heard loud and clear, there were some concerns within community and city council. So what it did is, this is moving a little faster than normal. We would have worked a lot more with staff. So we have a draft that we've worked a little bit with staff, but I would ask that we, if you feel good with the general principles, and I'll answer some basic questions on this, that we work with staff and the Commonwealth attorney. I've already talked to the Commonwealth attorney or his deputy very briefly on this, but we need to finalize it. For example, what we've done is our intern, Ariana Caldwell, worked to find other localities and what they've done to address the issue of canine hybrids. So we've taken basically three other localities, the city of Richmond, Loudoun County, and James City County, and we've looked at their ordinances, looked at our own ordinance, and we've tried to craft something that fits in with both, fits in with our ordinance. So, what you'll notice is, this address is just hybrid canines, not all exotic animals such as Loudoun County, for example. They had a problem, I understand there was an alligator once that was turned loose, and they wanted to be able to regulate that. Fortunately, city of Roanoke hadn't had that type of issue, so I have brought you just canine hybrids. Are we on the same page with council so far? Also, have tried to address it, looked into the issue of whether someone is grandfathered. Instead of fighting, saying prohibiting all and losing on that where we didn't have regulations, we looked at what city of Richmond did about allowing the grandfathering but registering it, canine hybrid or hy- hybrid canines such as wolf hounds to be treated the same as dangerous dogs. Now, these are all canines. Please understand that you still have to register and get licensed and get rabies shots and the normal procedures that you would with any other animal, but they're heightened under this draft ordinance, that they'll be prohibited afterwards. But if you have them in the city, city council's not saying, oh, you have to either get rid of your dog or leave the city, these animals that are hybrids, mainly we're talking about wolf hybrids and coyote hybrids. What we're going to do is, we'll work together, you have to register that animal, then it's going to be treated just like a dangerous dog. Normally, you hear every dog gets a free bite. Well, these are types of animals that will not get a free bite if they attack another animal or bite a human being, they will be treated like a dangerous dog, and then they'll be disposed of accordingly in this draft. Still needs some work, but if in general council feels comfortable with the approach we're going down, I will then have it finalized for consideration on the 18th. Here to answer any questions, I know this moved a little faster than normal, so I expect questions.
When I was reading through the ordinance, it talks about how the hybrids would have to be housed.
Yes, and that's one thing I'm working with. We're going in, there's federal standards, state standards, and then we want to make sure that we're in conformity with that as well as our other codes. So there's probably going to be some tweaking on that. That's in the definitional section that we address.
Now, is that, those requirements for housing, are they, are they part of the registration process?
Yes, they'll be part of registering then. Our people will go, have to go out and inspect and make sure that you're properly contained because you don't want these animals escaping, as we've seen an issue, and getting out. They have to be contained in a manner consistent with, again, federal, state, and then hopefully our local ordinance.
So what if these animals can't be vaccinated?
Well, they still have to be.
So that will be part of what we're looking at, as you did say that?
Yes, they still need to have, for lack of another word, a dog license, or a canine license, let's call it that. And we're working, I've got to work with staff and get some of these details. Remember, staff is someone who's going to be tasked with enforcement. I need to make sure that they're good and comfortable with this. My hope is to bring it back to the 18th. But please understand, if there needs to be more work, I will let you know, and then it would come back on September 2nd. The important thing is to get this right so that our staff feels comfortable, Commonwealth attorney feels comfortable, and that we have something that we believe that we can defend, enforce, and it protects our residents. That's the goal.
So I have another question.
Absolutely.
And this might be something separate, so help me understand this. So, the issue right now with why we're here, and we all know that we're here because of the situation that's happening with four dogs, is that something separate that a certain type of business not be in a residential area?
That is going to be a business license issue separately and apart from this. So I've just understood that there's being a business, there's concerns that there's a business being run in a residential section. That would be handled with a different department, and that is not being addressed by the four corners of this. That's what I've heard for the first time, and then we will refer and work with our city manager and staff to address that concern.
Would that fall under zoning as well with the?
Very possibly.
The Commissioner of Revenue's office is definitely looking into that.
Correct, and we'll coordinate with zoning because that's one aspect of running any businesses that you're properly zoning.
Well, and here's, here's a breakdown, I fear, that we've already been told that there were complaints in 2023 with zoning. So, we need to figure that out as well moving forward to help, you know, these residents because these people over there are scared to death. They're not even letting their children go outside and play.
And I don't know what happened in 2023. I can only deal with what I have now in front of me.
Well, I'm just telling you because I think it all needs to be out on the table because our residents need to know that we take this seriously. I mean, you know, there's a daycare and a church that are managing and taking care of children 100 feet away from this. I just don't want to see something really bad happen. These dogs get out too quickly. They're artists and they're escape artists.
Well, that's one of the things I've tried to address here in what we talked about, how we define the accommodations for these animals.
And I truly understand that we do have dog owners that really, truly do what they're supposed to do and take care of their animals, and I understand that and I respect those. But this group of, this group of dogs, these people are not responsible with these dogs. And it's just a matter of time that something really serious is going to happen, and I don't want to be on this council to see that happen.
Again, based on what came to me through the council at the last meeting, I've drafted something, we're working with staff, we're moving it as quickly as possible, but again, let's get it right.
Well, I agree.
So let's get it right, and I hope to have it back to you by the 18th for adoption. If it's not here on the 18th, it'll be here on September 2nd, but let's get it right. And I think we've got a draft and a good working document to get input from our animal control people and from Commonwealth attorney to ensure that we address the problem as much as we can under the law.
So I'd just like to say too, so that the audience and other people know, that we were at the meeting, the mayor was there, I was there, Mr. Hagan was there. If you see these dogs out, like the police officer said, please call 911 so this can be documented. That is very important that that happens. And I know all of us want to be good neighbors and we want to do the right thing with our neighbors, but we need to reach out and call 911. But please know we are trying everything we can to work this out for you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Mr. Spencer, when somebody applies to have a license for their dog, who's going to go inspect the home to make sure that is okay? And that is done before they move in the dog into the house to see if they could have it in the home?
Well, realize this ordinance is going to ban canine hybrids in the city of Roanoke. The only ones that this is going to address with additional registration, licensure and inspection are the existing animals that are here. So, no one's going to be able to bring in a new wolf hybrid or coyote hybrid animal into the city of Roanoke after adoption of this ordinance. This is going to prohibit them, which takes the approach that Loudoun did, not the approach that, say, James City County, which just regulated them. We are regulating only the existing animals.
And do we have an idea how many of them are in the city?
Not at this point. I understand that there are several, but we do not have all that information. But of course, as they're discovered, we can address the issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Hagan?
Mr. Spencer, can you quickly walk through the process for the rabies vaccination? As in, do we have to, does the owner have to prove that, hey, this has been by a licensed veterinarian, that the canine hybrid has been?
And our former treasurer is very familiar with this process, but in general, she's going to correct me if I'm wrong because she did the hands-on work. In general, you've got, let's say I've got this lovely little poodle, and I need to get dog license. Well, part of that dog license process, I have to bring a certificate from the vet that this dog has all the required shots, including the rabies shot. I see a lot of nodding heads, which means people who have dogs, we know this. And then you bring in and you get that license for a certain period of time, and that rabies vaccination has to have been updated for the period of the license. Now, am I, did I get that right from your perspective of what you received as treasurer back in the day?
Yes, unless you're a dangerous dog. Then it gets to be a little bit more.
Then it gets to be more.
Okay, so since this would classify canine hybrids as dangerous dogs, what is the additional?
Well, that's where the ordinance spells out what the registration is and that process. And what we're hoping to do is have it mirror very much a dangerous dog approach.
And those dogs actually have to get registered with the state of Virginia first. It's $185. You have to come in with your paperwork, you have to go through animal control. Teresa Jenkins usually, I guess she still handles that. She documents everything. Come down to the treasurer's office, you pay the $185. You stay on that register, but then you have to get a policy from your insurance company. It's usually $100,000.
$100,000. So those are the things, those are the details that we're working right now because there isn't a state registry for hybrid. That would be only local. So how are we going to try to mirror it, make the fee structure similar, the penalties similar, and have it follow in the same manner? That's some of the details that you will probably see some changes from this draft as we work with staff to address those issues.
Okay.
Great question, by the way.
Is it understanding that the fee is, that we can set it on our own, that the state done, it's not like a tiered or, or there's not some suggestion out there? We can pick what we?
Correct. I'm, in my draft, I'm attempting to mirror the states. Because I think that's the most defensive.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Other questions? Mr. Nash?
I would just say, I appreciate the work. I know, you know, we kind of just say like, hey, like, you know, like as quick as possible ASAP, but I think this is good for the city. You know, I mean, I think that sometimes there are issues that warrant this type of speed behind them, and I think, you know, people always think of cities and municipalities as always kind of moving slow and taking forever to do things, and I think it's good that at some points or over time, we kind of become adjusted to moving a little bit quicker when it comes to, you know, how we proceed on certain issues. So I think you and your team and Ms. Cor, what's her? So I think you and your team and Ms. Cor, what's her?
Cardwell. Ariana Cardwell.
Cardwell for her work as well.
Yeah, she's probably blushing while watching this at home, but that's okay. She did good work.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I just want to make a couple of comments. As Ms. Powers shared, I was able to be at the Greater Dyrly Neighborhood Association meeting, and I really commend the neighborhood for their advocacy and their research. Their presentation to the neighbors was very thorough, highlighted specific incidents that had been reported, and then learned that there were other incidents that had not been reported, which to your point, it's really critical. And all of these incidents center around one address, where these wolf dogs, hybrid canines are located. I do want to share, because they approved a motion at the meeting that said, we support the city of Roanoke's efforts to remove canine hybrids from 3580 Windsor Avenue Southwest. That is the address of the business. I'm just stating that for the record. I think my, what I want to ensure that we do, so that we don't, to the extent that we don't have to have multiple steps, I know you're working on this from the legal perspective of the ordinance.
And it's an ordinance for the entire city, for the safety in the entire city. This is not an ordinance targeting one individual or one dog. This is something, a policy that council would like to say, we don't want hybrid canines anywhere in the city.
Correct.
Because I just want to be clear of that, because-
So there are three, there are kind of three threads that are running through this. One is what you just said, a citywide ban.
Yes.
The second is the grandfathered issue.
Correct.
And even with the heightened regulations, I want to make sure that if those are not followed, that there is a mechanism to have the-
Correct. Just as a dangerous dog that doesn't follow those regulations will have consequences.
And the third is, I would really love to see the planning department, maybe this city manager question, the planning department look at that particular zoning issue, and it would be great if we could have that come back as part of this.
Yes, we'll be working directly with the city attorney's office.
And Ms. Mayor, today's first day, I've heard that concern.
I know, and I understand that.
Yes.
Just, just in terms of a matter of efficiency.
Yes.
It would be helpful to do all of that at one time.
Absolutely.
To the extent possible. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Please extend our thanks to Ms. Cardwell and your team. We appreciate your work on this. Again, we appreciate the Greater Dyrly Neighborhood Association for your hard work on this and your care for not only the neighborhood but the city. And for those of you who are able to be here for this briefing today, thank you also for your attendance. Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, our next briefing is from our city manager, and I believe council received a handout related to this. This is a follow-up to my council member initiative on the creation of the Hope and Home Task Force, and I'm pleased to welcome Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, and council members. This presentation is part of an important initiative brought forth by our mayor, and it's actually the first council member initiative of its kind, aimed at tackling homelessness in our community head-on. We're at a critical moment where the issue impacts so many lives, whether directly or indirectly. By focusing on compassion, dignity, and strong partnerships, we believe we can make a meaningful progress together. This effort is more about, is more than just about policies and numbers. It's about people, it's about families, it's about neighborhoods, and it's about building a community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. I'm excited to walk you through staff's response to this council member initiative and some of our recommended key areas of focus for this task force. As you recall, at the June 2nd meeting, the Mayor's Hope and Home Council Member Initiative was introduced. This is staff's response to that council member initiative. The city of Roanoke is part of the Blue Ridge Containment of Care, which is a coalition of agencies, organizations, nonprofits, congregations, and individuals working to end homelessness in the Blue Ridge region of Virginia. Over the last 15 years, the community has seen a 30% reduction in homelessness. However, post-COVID, there has been a significant increase in unsheltered individuals and families. This highlights the need for a dedicated task force at this time. It is our hope that the task force will strengthen community collaboration and support, as well as develop a set of comprehensive recommendations, including housing options, and provide measurable progress models. We believe that homelessness should be rare, brief, and non-recurring. Staff recommends appointing local residents and business owners that represent a diverse cross-section of the community, particularly those areas that are impacted or can impact homelessness in our city. We believe a 12 to 18-month commitment is needed or required. Over the next 12 to 18-month period, the group will work collaboratively to develop and deliver a set of actionable recommendations to city council and city administration. City staff will support the task force by drafting and adopting an official enacting resolution to establish the group, coordinating meeting logistics to ensure smooth operations, and by offering general support to the task force as a whole. Again, the goal of this task force is to, is to develop a set of comprehensive, actionable, and measurable recommendations to assist city council and city administration with addressing the needs of people experiencing homelessness in our city. There are three key areas that staff is recommending that the task force review and or study. Now, the task force is not limited to these areas, but we do have three. Number one, education, policy, and advocacy. Work with staff to get educated on homelessness and understanding the different populations of homelessness in the city. Also, get an overview of the services and programs that are currently being offered. Mr. Kruichshank and his team will be extremely instrumental in this effort. Number two, services and resources or data research. Review the current services and programs. Conduct a gap analysis. Do we need more behavioral mental health services? Do we need more job training? Do we need more police enforcement? Also, review your funding available. As you know, the city receives local, state, and federal funds, but what about our philanthropic endeavors? And number three, housing. How can we increase our affordable housing supply? Do we need another group home? Do we need a shelter? To significantly impact homelessness, we must take a collaborative approach and partner with the community as a whole. The task force's work to reduce homelessness will promote compassionate, community-centered care. This work aligns closely with the City Plan 2040 goals by focusing on improving physical well-being and community health, expanding housing opportunities, and ensuring that equity is reflected in every, every level of effort. The task force will bring together diverse voices, including neighborhood leaders, resource providers, property developers, business owners, and residents, to work collaboratively over the next 12 to 18 months. The task force will be supported by the Housing Programs and Policy Officer, once hired. In the interim, myself, as well as Deputy City Manager Angie O'Brien, will serve as liaisons. Staff has also partnered with Dr. Scott Tate, who is the Deputy Director of Community Innovation from the Virginia Tech Center for Economic and Community Engagement. Dr. Tate will serve as our task force facilitator. I do believe Dr. Tate is here with us? Thank you. The task force will meet monthly in person with additional virtual subgroup work. Together, they will engage in a shared learning process aimed at delivering a set of clear, actionable recommendations, including policies and investment strategies, to guide Roanoke's efforts moving forward. Virginia Tech's team will play a vital role, partnering with city staff and the task force to provide a deep analysis, facilitate task force meetings, research promising practices from across the country, and guide the development of the strategies and actions and recommendations. Their approach focuses on a four-stage appreciative inquiry process: discovery, dialogue, design, and delivery, which focuses on positive, people-centered, and action-oriented solutions. By early 2027, Roanoke will be equipped with a clear understanding of homelessness and housing insecurity in our city, as well as prioritize roadmap to make meaningful progress towards sustainable actions. Thank you for taking the time to engage with this important initiative. Tackling homelessness is a complex challenge, but with our leadership of our mayor and the commitment of this council, we're laying the groundwork for real, lasting, sustainable change. This initiative is not just a document, but a call to action for all of us. By working together, supporting existing services, and centering compassion and dignity, we can create a community where everyone feels safe and valued. We look forward to collaborating with each of you in the task force as we move forward and turn these goals into results. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. That was a great overview. Questions or comments from council? Mr. Vallisum?
Do we have the roster of who's on the task force?
We'll be announcing it at 1 o'clock.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, no, it's a good question.
Very good.
What did he say? What was his question?
The question was, we have a roster of who's on the task force. We do, and at 1 o'clock this afternoon, we'll be holding a press conference in here to share some of the information that you just shared. I'll be sharing some additional information. We'll introduce the task force at that time.
Question. So where it says, on the last slide, I believe it's like, yeah, second to last slide, where it says, cost contract $17,000 miscellaneous $5,000?
Yes.
What does that encompass?
Yes, so we have partnered with UVA, I'm sorry.
Virginia Tech.
Virginia Tech, sorry. I caught it real quick. And for the, for 18 months, for the facilitation, for reviewing best practices and bringing back real recommendations, they have given us a extremely discounted rate to do that process for us. So that would be for Dr. Tate and his team. And the $5,000 is just miscellaneous, and whether we need to, you know, make copies, snacks, all of those things.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to say, Ms. Turner, thank you very much, and I appreciate this initiative. I'm really looking forward to seeing what we hear back, because I think we hear from a lot of people that are frustrated and also heartbroken, and sort of some combination of that sometimes, from what they're seeing in their neighborhoods and around our city. And I think we all want to do everything that we can, you know, within reason, to address the situation in a compassionate, you know, and forward-moving way. And so I'm looking forward to what we hear back, because I often think to myself, what are we not doing that we could be doing? Because I think we are already doing so much, and a lot of what we communicate to constituents and the public are explaining a lot of the actions that we are taking across the board, you know, every city, department, and agency working on this where they can. And yet, you know, it does feel like we still have this, this issue. So I think this will be really helpful, I think, I hope, with also the public and just being able to have some data, like what, what's working, what's not working, what could we do that we're not doing, maybe look at what's working in other places. So I just want to say thank you, a long-winded way of saying I think this is a really important issue. I know I hear about it a lot, I care about it a lot, so thank you for moving it forward.
And, and thank you, thank you for the support. I did want to make sure that I acknowledge Mr. Kruichshank here. His, he and his team have done such a phenomenal job, and, you know, homelessness is very fluid, you know, you know, individuals go in and out of homelessness each and every day. And so, I mean, I'm sure he can, you know, tell many, many stories. And so as part of this, Mr. Kruichshank and, and his team will also be working with the task force, ensuring that, you know, we first educate, because it is extremely complex. It may not seem like it is, but it is very, you know, extremely complex. We have different population of homelessness. You know, we have what we call transitional, we have what we call episodic, we have what we call chronic, and we also have what we all hit, call hidden. And so just being able to explain that terminology and really make sure that our task force understands and, and what it does is help us get it out into, you know, the larger community, you know, not just all the things that we are doing, but all the things that we can do. So we're excited as well from a staff perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I do also want to commend Deputy City Manager Angie O'Brien for a lot of research and legwork on this, helping come up with the concept as well. Thank you. And to your point, I want to reiterate, this is not to do the work that our community partners are already doing. Their work is frontline, it's significant. One of the challenges I think they recognize is that they don't have the time necessarily to educate the community, or to field all the calls, or the concerns that come through. So this is as much about educating the larger community and engaging the larger community. So any citizen, business owner, anybody that wants to be involved in this, there will be subcommittees under these three key areas that you described. Everyone will have an opportunity to actively participate. There will be interviews, there will be focus groups, there will be community conversations. So anyone who wants to be heard on this will have an opportunity to be heard. But I also want to reiterate, this is about finding solutions. So I encourage citizens, in whatever capacity, to think about what you're concerned about, and then do some homework on potential solutions to address those concerns, because that will help us move the needle a lot more quickly. I get that we all need to vent from time to time, but we can't just vent. We have to be proactive, and that's what this is about. So thank you all. And again, we'll have a press conference at 1 here in council chambers to share more information, and we appreciate everyone who's willing to step up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. All right, that is all of our business for this morning. We will be in recess until 2 o'clock PM for our series of closed meetings. Thank you all for coming.
Any way, or, or does that person's family have any way of knowing where they're being sent, on being able to track their, their progress through the system, or any way of contacting them if they are deported from the country?
Well, we're supposed to, as attorneys, we're supposed to be informed anytime our clients are moved between ICE facilities. That is not happening, and it's not happening at Alligator, Alcatraz at all.